...to listen to what the candidates have to say. I certainly appreciate the candidates for being willing to venture out into the political field. I know it is certainly not easy. It's not easy trying to get elected, certainly not easy once you get elected. But we do need good people, and I appreciate y'all taking your time to do that. For those who are running for the first time, and for those who have run before, and panelists, thank you very much. I think we're about ready to get underway with our live stream. We're glad to have those of you who are watching on thirteen WMaz.com and M-A-Z mobile. Keep in mind, this is a very important election as all elections are. We are less than a month away from the start of early voting. We are less than two months away from Election Day. So time draws short, and this is a great opportunity and a great way for you to learn where the candidates stand on particular issues, so you can make an informed choice at the ballot box. We want to certainly thank Robbins Regional Chamber for putting this together, and the fine folks here at Central Georgia Technical College for allowing us to use their auditorium. While some of you made things a little warm in here today, keep in mind that outside today it was a hundred and three degrees. So I'm pretty confident we're better in here than that, alrighty? Also want to thank our panelists for taking time to be with us. For those of you who are joining us on the live stream, I'm gonna introduce our panelists. Steve Beiner is with us today. He is a retired Air Force officer, Chief Air Force Reserve Integration basing in Brack Branch, and also a member of the Warner-Robins Planning and Zoning Board. Lauren Schultz is an attorney with James Bates-Brandon-Grover. She is a member of the Robbins Regional Chamber Board, and also a member of the Houston County Family Connections Board. Shane Gottwals is the owner of Gottwals Books. He's a member of the Robbins Regional Chamber Board, also Central Fellowship Board Chair. And Dr. Daryl Byning is pastor of Hebron Baptist Church, is a member of the Community Outreach Service Center, and a community activist. Thank you for being here. Without further ado, we will begin with post four. Candidates, if you will, take center stage, and that will be Tim Thomas and Kevin Lashley. Alright, Steve Beiner will ask the first question. It will be directed first to Mr. Lashley. Candidates will be able to answer each question that is asked. There are not gonna be any specific questions. A question is asked, and all of the candidates will be allowed to answer. Steve, you want to start off with Mr. Lashley first?
Yes, sir. What do you think is the greatest challenge our community faces, and what is your plan to address it?
Thank you, and thank you everybody for being here tonight. I really appreciate it. The greatest challenge, as I see it right now, facing our community is the way we're operating our local government. Seems to me that we've hit a point where there's no cooperation between council, mayor, any of the other areas of our city government. That reflects poorly on this whole community, and our whole county, and all of Middle Georgia. I've spoken with numerous leaders in various communities around here, and the consensus is that Warner-Robins right now is operating in a state of disarray. We are the leaders of Middle Georgia. The base is here in our town. We need to have a strong centralized government that works together on a consistent basis to make sure that when BRAC commissions do come back around, they don't look at us like we're running a three-ring circus. Everybody that I've spoken with is on board with all of my plans to try to form a system of government here, and getting back to the older days of how we used to operate, with a stronger mayoral position, and council there to give legislative advice. That's where I stand. Those are my fears. Those are the biggest, most pressing needs that we have right now, is make sure we get back to a state in this government where we're operating in a courteous manner and working consistently with each other.
Mr. Thomas, two minutes to answer the same question, please.
Thank you very much, and also thank you all for being here. We kind of disagree in this. I believe we are operating fine. I talked to a lot of cities. We go into a lot of meetings with them. Every city has these issues. We're not new to it. But the pressing concerns that I look at is, you know, not whether or not we all get along. We do get along. I talk to the mayor two, three times a week, as well as other council members. We talk to the chairman several times a week, with the county, other cities. But when you have a government, you want different opinions. You want checks and balances. That's what the mayor is our executive. We're legislative. That's your checks and balances. And we all shouldn't have the same opinions. We should have certain goals, yes, but that doesn't mean we have the same route to get there. Now, to your question, what is my concern moving into the future? There's not just one. When I lay down at night, my mind is thinking sewer, water, gas, fiber. I'm thinking about police, how many more police officers we're gonna need. We're five short right now. We'll probably, I guess we'll be full in another four or five months. Then we're gonna have to have ten more positions approved. That worries me. The utility crews were short accrued there. Public Works was short accrued. So for me, once you get elected, you realize there's not just police and fire. There's a lot of things that you lose sleep overnight. Then you have to worry about the budget, not raising taxes. So, you know, when you do get elected, before you get elected, you think you know all the answers. When you sit in that seat and you have to make the hard decisions, you realize it's not that easy.
Our next question will come from Pastor Byning. It's going to Mr. Thomas first.
What uniquely qualifies you to be a city council person?
Well, first of all, when I ran six years ago, I was in business for thirty years. I owned a bond company. I built new homes. I have rental property. I'm a mediator. I registered since ninety-nine in State of Georgia. And, you know, it's a funny question, because when I first got elected, I walked in there when it was Carolyn Robbins, and she was gonna get me up to date. I thought I knew it all. After I finished with her in an hour, I realized I knew nothing. So it has taken six years to learn every bit of the part of government that we know now, from stormwater, how you can use those funds, splash funds, how you can use those, whether you can use them for police. You've got condemned funds that you can use only for certain things. So what brings, what I've got now is knowledge. I know the different accounts. I know how we can move them legally. I know what we can do with them. The other thing I've done is I've got a hundred and forty-four hours of training through GMA, through, you know, post-furition courts.
Same question. This time, Mr. Lashley, one minute to answer.
Absolutely. What uniquely qualifies me is the fact that I know how to work with people. I've been doing insurance for twenty-five years, twenty-four, twenty-five years. We had a family business here in town. I know how to delegate authority. In the current role that I have, I lead crews on disaster cleanup of houses. I know how to delegate the authority. I know how to look at a task and get it done from the top down to the bottom of it. Uniquely, being uniquely qualified as a councilman in this city, I think it, those are my qualities. It's hard to put one thing in there. I don't have all of the training. I don't have six years existing in there right now. This is my first time in politics, and I know that I'm gonna have to learn a lot of the issues. And I know that I'm gonna have to prove that I'm a good quality councilman. And that's gonna be my goal, and that's my desire, and I will get it done for you.
Next question comes from Shane Gottwals. It goes to Mr. Lashley first, and they have one minute to answer.
Many in the community have been vocal about the need for a forensic audit. Should a forensic audit be performed, and why or why not?
Well, as I understand it, we do audit every year. Now, a forensic audit from an outside impartial firm, I'm a hundred percent in favor of. I would love to see somebody come in and open these books up and see where all the money's going, how it's being moved around, where we're looking at, different deficits are, different surpluses are. And, you know, if you go back and look over ten years ago, we had right around twenty-four million dollars in our rainy day fund. We're down to seven, right at seven now, according to what I've looked into and what I've tried to figure out. So, yes, I'm in favor of having somebody come in and open these books up, and let's look at them from top to bottom. Let's figure out where our money's going as a citizenry.
Same question, Mr. Thomas, one minute.
Yes, sir. That's a good question. When Chuck Shaheen was elected, I told him, I said, "That's what we need. We need that audit." When Randy and I got elected in two thousand thirteen, I told the mayor the same thing. Let's do it in an audit before we touch the money. Let's make sure everything's good. But, yes, I'm not opposed to it one bit. There's one thing I can tell you. With our city, we have people that handle monies even for our authorities. The different authorities don't even touch the money. It goes through our finance department at the city. So, you know, do I think that it's warranted? Sure, I wouldn't have a problem with it. But I trust our employees that handle the money. Holly, Penny, Randy Tombs, these guys, I have no problem with it, but I do trust these guys with the money.
Next question will come from Lauren Schultz. She'll ask it to Mr. Thomas first. She'll ask the same question with a slightly different version to Mr. Lashley. So Lauren, you'll direct the first question to Mr. Thomas.
Thank you. City council meetings have been referred to as a circus on social media and by attendees because of the lack of professional decorum, surprise agenda items, lack of supporting documents, and closed sessions, and more. Councilman Thomas, the question for you is, do you think this statement has merit? If so, why is this the norm, or why is it tolerated, or why has this not effectively been addressed? For Mr. Lashley, same question with a slightly different take, which is, do you think this statement has merit, and what, if any, changes would you make to the way council meetings are conducted?
I can speak for myself. I take my job serious. It's not a circus to me. If you know me, you know I do my homework. You know I look into the numbers. Do things get added to the agenda at the last minute? That happens all the time. Sometimes the mayor will put it on there. Sometimes we'll ask to put it on there. The practice is, get it in by Wednesday, and it's on the agenda. There are times where it's an emergency, and we have to add those things. Closed session, we do go there for personnel, real estate, litigation. Those things you can't do in the open. Anyone that thinks you can just doesn't understand government and the Prophecy Acts with our employees.
Mr. Lashley, you have a minute to answer.
Yes. As one of the main pillars that I put as part of my platform is to operate in the light of day. If we can't do our city's business in the light of day, we don't need to be doing the business of this city at all. We have to do that. Now, with what we're speaking of, as far as personnel issues and things that are a private nation, when you are doing bids and things, you have contractors involved, you do have to do some of those in closed session. And that's more for competition reasons between different contractors. You don't want each one knowing each other's bid going ahead of time. So what I'm suggesting is, we cut out all of the negativity that you get in a council meeting now. We cut out the back door, leaving all of a sudden in the middle of a council meeting and going into private session. That's the kind of thing that we have to stop. That's what our citizenry is looking at, and they don't appreciate. And that's what I'm gonna try my best to stop from happening.
Next question comes from Pastor Byning. It goes to Mr. Lashley first.
Recently, there have been calls for a review of the city charter. Would you support an independent review of the charter?
One hundred percent. I would love to have that charter reviewed. I think what we are looking at currently is a council that's operating on emergency powers that were granted several years ago. We need to change back to the original form that the charter was written in. Now, to do that, we have to have, that has to go through the state. And we have two representatives that are willing to get that legislation through right now. So I am one hundred percent for a review of the charter. And we need to go back to the division of powers, how it needs to be. No longer allow council to run this government in this city.
Same question, Mr. Thomas, one minute to respond, please.
Okay. The charter, we are going through some of that now as we speak. As a matter of fact, what we're doing is reorganizing the city departments. And what we want to do, we do want an administrator in place. Doesn't mean that he overrules the mayor, but we need one. If you look at the county, they have an administrator with Tommy Stonaker. Salaries doesn't really matter to me, as long as they're both doing a full-time job. But we're at the size now where the day-to-day operation of a hundred million dollar business requires that kind of education. Doesn't mean that you're taking any powers from the mayor. Doesn't mean you're taking any powers from the council. Even if we have the administrator, I still believe, mayor hires his department heads, we approve or disapprove, just like it's always been. To say that we take liberties, I don't believe that. We know what the charters are. We have an attorney that advises us. This is what you can do, this is what you cannot do. We all respect the mayor, he respects us. Regardless of whatever everybody thinks, we actually do get along pretty good.
Next question from Lauren Schultz. It goes to Mr. Thomas first.
What are your opinions on the structure of government needed for the city of Warner-Robins? Specifically, you touched on a city administrator. Why would you want a city administrator or a city manager as opposed to a city manager, or do you think neither is needed?
Well, here's what I'm talking about in council meetings for the ones that haven't attended. What I think we ought to do, head down that road through an administrator, and have it already approved to go to the state. It will go into effect after the next mayor's election. In other words, whoever runs for mayor, the next election will know what they're getting into. They'll know what the salary will be, whether it stays where it is or moves. They'll know what their responsibilities will be. Council will know what their responsibilities will be. Now, one thing I do not like is this. I do not want an administrator coming from some other city, bringing his whole team with him. I like everybody being hometown. We hire our people here, and the mayor will determine who he appoints as his department heads. We will determine if we hire them or not, just like we always have. But I think at this point, with the size of our city, the mayor needs somebody that's here day-to-day running operations while he's out selling the city. Of that, I firmly believe.
Same question from Mr. Lashley, one minute to respond, please.
I am a firm believer that we do indeed need somebody to help administrate this city. My plan that I would like to present is to go in and look at some of the consultants that we have, particularly with our development authority boards, and maybe eliminate that contract, take that money, and let's go on a search of every military town in this country. Find somebody that is running a city there, and try to recruit them to come here and help us. You can go around this country, and you can look at great bases that are out there, like Tinker, different places like that. They all have city administrators in place to help them build the city that needs to be done. We have a chance. We can move that money from contracts on certain consultants that we're using, take it, apply it to paying that person, and then maybe we can get some good positive growth done here in this town.
Next question comes from Steve Beiner. It goes to Mr. Lashley first.
We have withdrawn funds from our savings at an alarming rate. How do we build our rainy day fund back up?
First and foremost, we have to figure out where we're spending the money, what it's going to, where we can stop spending and wasting. Now, some of us can look at a park and see what we've done with certain people going in and making these beautiful parks, and they're great. Everybody loves a good park. But we also have another person that's out there helping us build parks, and he's doing it a quarter of the cost. Maybe that's some area that we can look at. You know, when we can get something for three-hundred and four-hundred thousand instead of one-point-six million, that's a good place to start looking. Other places, looking at different expenditures we have as far as what we're paying on consultants to come in with development authority boards and things like that. Start looking at those costs. If we can cut those costs there, we're gonna be able to do the things we need to do in the future.
Same question, Mr. Thomas, one minute, please.
Yes, and let's talk about the consultants. When you look at the different boards, and who's on those boards, Mr. Lashley sits on two of the boards, of the three boards that are there. Both boards, he made the motion to pay the consultants quite a bit of money. As far as your parks go, those are splash funds for recreation. With your rainy day funds, here's what I think. Before I raise taxes for any reasons, I want to look at where we can save money. And here's what I'm talking about. If you look at Public Works, for example, we send a crew of four out to a job. We're sending two trucks. I think we should be sending one truck that says four, that cuts your cost in half right there. That goes back to your fund. If you look at the rollback we just did, that goes back to your funds. We're about three months of savings is where we're supposed to be by charter. So we're not below where we should be. We have been hoarding money over years, and what we've done is we decided this time to put that money back into the city of Warner-Robins. I mean, we've got a lot of needs.
Next question, Shane Gottwals, and it goes to Mr. Thomas first.
How can Warner-Robins attract more businesses to our community, and what will attract the higher-paying jobs to Warner-Robins?
Good question. When I was elected six years ago, the first thing I said was, "I'm gonna work to get industry in Warner-Robins." Well, first time I went out looking for companies with a group, we realized we were not ready for it. Companies want a shovel-ready site. So what we did was create a development authority and a joint development authority to entice business. We bought four hundred and thirty-two acres. We've now got the fiber system we worked for. We've got water, sewer. We've got gas. So now we're ready. We landed our first company out of Canada, Careful Labor, and that first company paid for all of our properties, so it's paid for. So now we're really ready to start rolling. We did hire consultants, because when we started, we were all new at this. Now we know what we're doing. We no longer have that consultant with us. We do have our attorney with us, and we have Terry Coleman, which was the Speaker of the House, because you do have to have those people there to work for you. But recruiting companies is a very, very difficult thing to do, but it's easy to say you're gonna do it. But we have actually proven we can do it.
Same question about attracting business. This time, Mr. Lashley, one minute, please.
Well, first off, the main way we can attract business is have a more hospitable environment from our government. Any of y'all have been to a council meeting? You've seen how some of the council is handling certain developers that we have. You can't throw your developers that are willing to work with you under the bus. That just can't happen. You have to work with them. You have to show them that you're gonna deal with them in an honest fashion. Now, as far as having all of the fiber issues and all that other stuff, I don't even think that fiber network's up and running. Last I heard, the company that was putting in hasn't left town halls. So that's something that maybe we need to look into there. As far as going in and attracting other businesses, there's numerous ways that we can do that. We can do that by increasing our ability to help these companies come in and deal honestly with them as far as what we're gonna do, as far as providing all the sewer, all of the power, and do it in a manner where it is completed and not left hanging out to dry.
Lauren Schultz asks the next question. It goes to Mr. Lashley first.
Both of you have been involved with one or more of our local development authorities or agencies. Are there changes you would recommend or support to the scope and authority of the various Warner-Robins development agencies, and are they functioning as intended?
As far as the function of, as far as the state is concerned, none of them are functioning as they are intended. I did indeed sit on two of those boards. I sat through numerous meetings with some very good people that are here today that sat on those boards. We were told numerous things that were gonna happen. None of those ever happened. Quite the opposite. You can take certain projects that are going on. We're talking about beautiful high-rise lofts in downtown Warner-Robins. What do we get in turn? Not beautiful high-rise lofts. We've got adjusted income living apartments. So the development authorities need to be shut down. We need to terminate the contract with the consultants we have there. And we need to figure out how we can get the state involved to help us form these key, these key boards that we have to have, have them come together, and help us put them together in a more accurate manner.
Same question, Mr. Thomas, one minute, please.
Thank you so much. A2D is still here. As a matter of fact, the police department just went live on one of their buildings on Green Street. Loves it, says that they can upload quickly now. It's not taking disc by disc. Let me tell you this. The development authorities, you cannot do deals with corporations without them. City council can't do those deals. We can't do public-private partnerships. You set up RDAs, DDAs, and development authorities. Development authorities handles industry. DDA, downtown development. RDA, they handle your blight. And each one of those have certain monies that go towards that, that you can only use for those things. There's not a city around that hasn't developed, that has not used their development authorities. Perry has them. Byron has them. Macon has them. Atlanta has them. If we're gonna compete for companies, we have got to be willing to put the same thing on the table. And that's what we're doing. And change is hard. It's hard for people to come in and look at what we're trying to do and not understand it. I will tell you this. We do not waste any money on our development authority.
Next question, Steve Beiner. It goes to Mr. Thomas first, please.
According to Warner-Robins Police Department, twenty eighteen seen the largest number of homicides in our city's history. In order to transition from a reactive to proactive form of policing, Chief Wagner has stated we need more uniformed officers. How many uniformed officers do you believe is a correct number? And how will you secure funding to obtain that?
Thank you very much. As you know, we made some changes in the police department at the first of the year. We felt like it was time to make that change. I felt like it was time for that change. I'm the one that made the step to make the move. I'll be honest with you. Now, we are five short right now. We should have those positions filled within the next six months. They're going through training now. It looks like we're gonna hire them. I feel like we're probably gonna need another ten to fifteen at this point. How are we gonna fund it? We just had the military that we did roll back. That's a half a million dollars sitting there. I made a statement at the council meeting that if we do not roll back the taxes, let's earmark that for police department and for code enforcement, the police department being the main priority. What we also have done is we've upped the salaries this year from thirty-four to thirty-seven thousand. When you throw in the benefits, you're around fifty-four thousand dollars total package for a police officer. That's not a bad pay. It's competitive now, and that's what we've done.
Alright, same question, Mr. Lashley, about the police department. One minute to respond, please.
Yes. Warner-Robins Police Department is one of the finest in the land. There's no doubt about it. Now, my depth of knowledge, of course, being on the outside, I don't have all the figures that my opponent does, for sure. But I do know that I can trust Chief Wagner. I can talk to him. I can find out exactly what he needs at any point in time, and he would be more than happy to sit and tell me where his needs lie. If he tells me we need ten to fifteen new police officers, then I'm gonna do everything within my power to help the man get it. Also in that, not only, you know, the police, but we also have one of the best fire departments in town, and we are quite honestly not really paying much attention there. We need to increase their coverage, too. So I think anything that we can do on all of our first responders, that's where we need, we need to listen to our chiefs, what they're asking for, and be able to get them what they need.
Next question from Pastor Byning. It goes to Mr. Lashley first.
We promote Warner-Robins as the international city. What should be done to improve the approach to diversity, and the understanding of the importance of diversity in city government, in the workforce, and in upper management?
As far as diversity goes, when I go to city hall, I do see a diverse group of people. I see all races, all sexes, everybody getting along just fine. I think that if we continue our hiring processes, which as a councilman, I, you know, would be a part of from afar, but not on the day-to-day operations of, I think we do an excellent job in this city of being diverse. I don't know how else you can increase diversity other than being open to hiring any and all that are capable and qualified for the job.
Mr. Thomas, same question, please.
I think we have a ways to go. When you look at our department heads, we have one minority department head. That's it. We had several. When the new administration come in, they were pretty much ran out. We have not had anyone else sent to us as council to vote on it as a minority in a department head role. We just have not. And we, as council, cannot appoint anybody. We can only vote yes or no on them. The only choice we get to make is the city attorney, which we filled last night. So, I feel like we have a ways to go. Absolutely. There's no doubt about it. You cannot tell me that in a town of almost eighty thousand people, we do not have qualified people of minorities that can do these jobs. I just don't believe that.
Two more questions. This question will come from Lauren Schultz, and it goes to Mr. Thomas first.
There have been frequent boil advisories due to water main break issues over the past several months, and this is a similar two-part for each of you. Councilman Thomas, to you, is infrastructure maintenance properly funded? If so, why is this happening? If not, what are you willing to do about that? To Mr. Lashley, understanding that you do not have the same level of access to supporting information currently, what is your view on what is happening? And do you have any suggestions about what should be done to permanently fix the issues?
Thank you. Years ago, when developers were coming into town, they were putting pipes in the ground. The material, it just hasn't lasted. What we're doing now, for example, the tax allocation district covers a certain area of Warner-Robins. It's the older part of Warner-Robins. The reason we wanted the tax allocation district is not only to enhance growth in that area, but the money we make off that would go back into infrastructure. It has to be used in that tad district. That would take a lot of weight off of us there. The other thing we're dealing with is sewer. Our sewer is almost at capacity. If you're out there in the Bonner area, Warner-Robins area, we cannot put anything else on that system. So for the last several months, we've been meeting with Chairman Stonaker. There, of course, they're wanting the sewer there. The land out there does not perk well. But my stance has always been this. We're not gonna run sewer to an incorporated Warner-Robins, just so the county can grow. The city of Warner-Robins, the taxpayers have got to benefit somewhere in this. If the county wants to help us fund it, so be it, but we still own the system.
Mr. Lashley, one minute to respond, please.
Absolutely. Water main breaks, they happen for, it doesn't matter if it's city or county. I lived in the county prior to moving to the city, and I had plenty of water main breaks. And I do understand that there are inferior materials that have been used. There's inferior installation that's been used. Most of the older areas in town either used terracotta pipes forever. Um, most of the older areas in town either used terracotta pipes forever. Those were terrible at conducting water, because they just didn't allow roots to grow right through them. And we're all well aware of these problems. We can go in, though, as a city, as we find these areas, much like they did on the research down through this TAD area, where EPA was going to find hotspots. We can go in and find these hotspots, and we can start to correct the problem now. Uh, there's a street scape project that's supposed to be scheduled for Watson Boulevard, that's a perfect time to start there. Uh, GDOT's coming in to do a whole street scape, we can go in at that point, and we can change out these water lines at that point there.
One more question before closing statements, uh, Steve Minor will ask a question, it goes to Mr. Lashley first.
Do you think that Warner Robins needs a master plan? If so, what needs to be done to ensure that it's adhered to and not put on a shelf?
I think any city, any business, any corporation that's out there needs a master plan. If you don't have a master plan, how are you gonna execute any of your plans? I have a master plan, my wife and I have a master plan for our household. We know how we do things, how we operate, it's basically what she says I do. That's what we need in the city, though. We need that master plan, we put it in place, we follow it to a T. We do not hide it somewhere. It's, you take it and laminate it and put it up in council hall. There's a big open wall behind council, we can put it right behind us every day. So when we have a question, we turn around, look, there it is. So yes, we do need a master plan, we need an administrator, somebody in there to help us go through that master plan and execute it perfectly.
Mr. Thomas, one minute to answer, please.
And I agree, we do, and here's the problem, though, when you elect new officials, 'cause you gotta think about this, for ten years, we never had the same council in there. Every two years, we put two new people in there, and that went on for ten years. Myself, Mike Davis, Carol Robbins were the first to ever be re-elected after that ten-year period. And here's what happens, when you put a plan in place, and two more come in there, and then two more, they have their own goal. So that plan is shattered. And then they put their plan in place, well, guess what, it happens again and again and again. That's why Warner Robins has not had that plan. If you look at Warner Robins going down Watson, you can literally see the decades from the forties to fifties to sixties to seventies, eighties, and nineties. That's because there was never a master plan. Our city was not designed that way, it was designed to be a temporary base, but we lasted, and here we are. So that's what we're trying to do now, is put that together, and hopefully, it will stick, Wilson.
Time now for one-minute closing statements from our candidates, we'll begin with Mr. Thomas.
Thank you so much. There's been a lot said here about the park, the walk that Sandy Ryan was referencing. Let me tell you what, that money could not be used for anything but the park. It was a, it was a splash project. When you vote on those projects as voters, we're obligated to see those projects through. So we could not take that money and give it to PD or anybody else. When you look at the street scape that he mentioned a few minutes ago, I've worked that project for two years, it's been a lot of work. That's why we have a street, a street scape. When you look at a development authority, and, and he was saying a few minutes ago, "Well, we didn't do anything." Well, guess what? Just to get pure flavor was over two and a half years of hard work. You don't see it immediately. For us, you guys may see it pop on forty-one, but for us, that's two and a half years of work. And when we started our development authority, we had no money. We had zero amount of money in that account. Now we're over a hundred thousand dollars, and we're, we're maintaining that amount, and that money has to be used for economic development. You can't use it anywhere else.
All right, one-minute closing statement, Mr. Lashley.
We've seen what the last several years have been. We see what we see every week, we read the headlines, we watch the news, we see what's going on. As a city, do we want this to continue? I don't think so. All you people wouldn't be here today, we wouldn't have this whole batch of new candidates up here if you didn't want that. What I'm looking to do, and what I would like to do, is to get a environment open back up to deal with our local developers, not the ones from out of town, out of country even sometimes, to be able to come back and deal on an honest basis with us. Where we can go in and partner with our local builders, with our local contractors, with our local businesses that we have that want to expand, and stop being the laughing stock of the county, and start being the leaders that we are.
All right, thank you very much. Candidates for post four, Kevin Lashley and Tim Thomas, thank you for taking time. Up next, we'll bring our candidates for post six, the north side of town. Lauren DeBrett, incumbent Larry Curtis, and John Nichols, if you would come forward, please. And for those of you who are watching on the live stream, remember, October seventh, the last day you can register to vote, for those of you who have not. October fifteenth is when early voting begins, and then Tuesday, November fifth, is municipal election day. Ms. Brit, Mr. Curtis, Mr. Nichols, thank you very much for taking time to be with us, we appreciate you being here tonight. And we will begin the questioning with Shane Gottwals. Question goes first to Ms. Brit, and then we'll go down the line. Again, for the first question, candidate, you have two minutes to answer the first question only.
What do you think is the greatest challenge our community faces, and what is your plan to address it?
All right, thank you everybody for being here. So I thought a lot about this question beforehand. And my first thought was crime. Um, but then, as I started thinking more about it, I decided that communication and transparency is our biggest issue. Um, not only with the citizens, but also with other development authorities. Um, and what I plan to do about it, or at least propose, is that we Facebook livestream city council meetings. That way, people at home and people with children or have jobs have access to our city council meetings and can see what's going on. Also, we can record our city council meetings and have a YouTube channel where people can go back and review it. Perry has one, for instance. Um, we also need to make sure that we have a good communication with our authorities and our department heads. So, as a city council member, it'll be my job to reach out to those departments and at least keep an open line of communication. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Curtis, you have two minutes.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody for coming out, uh, Mr. Frank, with North Side and the South Side. So, I believe that our, my, our biggest challenge is, is blight. You know, we, we just need to clean our city up. Uh, the district that I represent is heavily, um, is, is, I mean, it's just full of black lights, like a cancer that's just consuming our city. We, post six is the foundation of Warner Robins, Warner Robins, Georgia. Watson Boulevard, Green Street, Alberta Road. These are the foundation, and right now, blight is eating us a lot. We need to clean up our cities, we need to give code enforcement the utilities, the necessary, uh, things that they need in order to, to address this blight issue. We gotta give them the resources to get our place and our city cleaned. Every road that you come in, we was talking about Watson Boulevard. I mean, it's, it's, it's starting to look like, I don't know, no disrespect to make it bill, but, I mean, just like one of the other councilmen said earlier, you can see the generations and the decades of just different, different, uh, eras of time coming down Watson Boulevard, so we gotta get code enforcement, the resources that they need in order to make the city look better. That way, it will be able to attract more industries and more businesses to post six.
Mr. Nichols, two minutes.
Thank you there, Frank. I, I believe that, uh, the greatest challenge to our community and, and what my plan is to address it, it's multifaceted, guys. Um, first, we've got to gain the trust of you guys. We, we've got to do whatever it takes to gain the trust of you guys. And the way you go about doing that is, first, you've got to correct the charter. The charter is not right, it, it's, it's, uh, it needs repair. And I've got, uh, a couple of different things that's gonna help make that repair first. Um, we need to see one of two ways. Either we're gonna have a strong mayor who's gonna run the, the city, who's gonna be the overseer of the city, uh, the day-to-day operations of the city. Or, we're gonna bring in the city administrator who's gonna work with him and, and run the day-to-day operations while the mayor is the face of Warner Robins. He's the guy that goes out and sells Warner Robins. He's the guy that shakes hands. And yeah, he's the guy that goes and plays golf sometimes and has lunch also, okay? Because I believe without a shadow of a doubt that that mayor's got to do those things. Uh, there are more things, there's more business done at House and Lake Country Club than a lot of places in Warner Robins that are businesses. Next, um, we need to bring back integrity. And how do we bring back integrity? We need to do what we were hired and voted to do. There are laws, there are guidelines, uh, for the city to run and for the mayor council to govern. Follow the sunshine laws. That what you do in public is what you do in private, is what you do behind closed doors. Once we have gained the trust of you guys, uh, through the integrity, uh, we live by, then we need to treat all citizens, north, south, east, and west, as they all are important. Not just one section of town, not just one overlay of town. We need to make sure that the entire city has an overlay that's gonna have a standard of building by. We need to make sure that that is followed. Um, lights, street scapes, beautification, street cleaning, drains, rite of ways that need cleaned up. I've already had somebody, I'm not even on council yet, and I've already had somebody call me and say, "Can you come over here and look behind my house?" All areas are treated fairly.
Thank you very much. Our next question comes from Lauren Schultz, it goes to Mr. Curtis first.
What uniquely qualifies you to be a city council person?
So first, um, Coach Pete from North Side, he always told me younger, he said, "Larry, you got two ears and one mouth, so you need to do a whole lot more listening than talking." That's my, my greatest qualification. I listen, I am here for the people, I, I take forth their issues, I address their issues. I'm not here to just sit up here and talk and be a loudmouth, you know? And criticize everything that's going on, when there's really not an issue. Also, uh, I totally agree that we should, as councilmen, we should be counsel to the mayor. And what a lot of people don't understand, we have something called an enterprise fund. I'm not gonna go into that, because I suppose people don't understand it. But as a business owner that has three successful businesses, I think I can help grow that enterprise fund. That way, we can lower taxes, we can, uh, make sure we have the money to pay our police officers that are truly needed.
Mr. Nichols, one minute to respond, please, to the question.
Yes, sir. Uh, fifty-five years, uh, a long-time citizen of the city of Warner Robins. I've been involved in business, I've been on the board of directors at the chamber. Um, I'm the middle Georgia Military Affairs Committee Chair right now. I've been involved with not only the base, but also business leaders around. Uh, I'm, I'm friends with many of those, I listen to what, uh, they want from us. Um, I have an ear for listening, um, and, and I'm a doer too, I'm a fixer. Uh, I, I, I like to make sure that things get done. And, and the way to do that is to buy, first, listen to those that we will, uh, have as, as our constituents, um, and then go do. Go, go work with fellow council, go work with the mayor, uh, and, and, you know, get the things done that need to be done. I believe I can do that, and I believe that I have what it takes to get it done.
Thank you. We'll finish up this question with Ms. Brit, one minute.
All right, um, what qualifies me? Is I've lived in Warner Robins my entire life, also have five children at home. I have seen what's going on in this community, um, whether it's shootings a couple houses down from me, whether it's a home invasion just last week around the corner from my house. Um, and I'm tired of it, to be honest. Um, that's why I'm up here, and that's why I am running for city council. I am ready for changes in this city, and I'm ready for post six to stop being ignored. And I don't mind voicing my opinion, and I don't mind asking the hard questions. Um, so I think those are certain things that qualify me to run for city council.
Next question from Steve Minor, it goes to Mr. Nichols first.
How will you manage smart growth in our community? With respect to residential, business, violence, traffic, filling existing vacant buildings, and encouraging growth in areas that need it?
I appreciate you asking that, 'cause that is what our district, our post is. Um, it, it needs a lot of help. Uh, you know, how will I, I will work diligently with, uh, the developers that are here. Uh, one of the things that I've heard over time is that, you know, we, we work hard to bring other entities, other companies in from the outside, but when it comes to developers here, we kinda shy away from them. We, we put a blind eye and, and try to, uh, n- not hear from them or, or help them. I know that there was a, 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 a plan in place to try to take care of Front Street all the way to Chev- to the Chevrolet dealership. Uh, that wasn't handled, that wasn't put into place. I don't know why, it just wasn't. But knowing that there are things like that that are here, uh, that are, that are trying to be done, you know, working together, trying to see that through. Uh, we, you know, unfortunately, we've lost many opportunities to build the city of Warner Robins over the last ten years. We need to do a better job.
Continue that question with Ms. Brit.
A majority of the post six or the north side of town is rental homes, because there are older homes that big companies can come in and purchase and do minimum fix-up on, and rent them out to people that don't mind what they look like on the outside. Um, so we definitely need to try to get more homeowners in that area. Um, the way you do that is by bringing more businesses to the area to uplift that side of town. We also need to change the face and how people look at the north side of town. When you think of the north side of town, you think of crime. Um, we need to start showing everybody what's good going on on that side of town, so people will be more interested in bringing businesses over to that area and moving to that area as well. Um, and when it comes to empty buildings, I went to a blight, um, study, and they suggested we do grants or have people that own the lots next to it purchase those buildings to take care of those empty buildings.
We'll finish up the question on smart growth in the community with Mr. Curtis.
Thank you, Mr. Steve. So, we, developers was mentioned. And there's not a lot of developers that wanna invest on, well, it stands to the north side of town, but actually, like I said, post six represents the north and the south sides of town. So, and a lot of times on that, that, those, uh, developers that we use, they don't use local vendors. You know, a lot of the times, they're going out to Atlanta. We have a supply store here in Warner Robins named after the city that doesn't really get that much business from local developers. But one thing I would like to do, again, we need to clean the area up. If, uh, the developer wanna come in from out of state or, or any other city, and they feel like they can make our area better, we need to invest with them, we need to help them, we need to entice them. The, at the end of the day, we just need to get it done. Or, I'm blank, we just need to get it done. Whatever it takes to get it done, we need to do it.
Pastor Viney has the next question, it goes to Ms. Brit first.
Since a place is a term used in economic development, and it's an important driver to increase community engagement, promote community pride, and support local business recruitment and growth, how do you think a, having a downtown or a city center, east or west, will impact Warner Robins' future?
Um, I am definitely pushing for having a downtown. That way, people can come out and have events, or we can have local business owners have a vendor spot there that people can come and purchase from local vendors, that'll help their revenue. Also, we can communicate with the people in our area. Uh, when I was growing up, I knew most of my neighbors, I'll be honest. Now, in this day and time, I don't know a lot of my neighbors, and most of them are in and out. So if we had a place where we could all come together as a community, I believe we would have a stronger, um, community and also a stronger relationship with each other.
Same question, Mr. Curtis, please.
Thank you, Pastor. So, downtown Warner Robins, downtown Warner Robins should be commercial circle. And again, it's just one of those situations where we need to get it done. We do not have any developers, local developers that's willing to come in and invest in the area. Uh, it's funny, I just talked to a young man, he was, he was asking, he would be great if we could get a brewery down there. So, you know, he was looking forward to doing that. But with the downtown redevelopment, we gotta let them do their job and stop criticizing them about what they're doing. They're doing a great job, they're working diligently to try to get that area redeveloped, but we, we're facing a lot of roadblocks, roadblocks. And until we allow people to do their job, you know, we're gonna continue to be in the same predicament that we're in. We need that downtown area. And if we wanna continue to keep our young generation here, we need areas like that. You know, they have no place to go, no things to do. So downtown Warner Robins is exactly what was, you know?
We'll finish up the question with Mr. Nichols.
Thank you very much, Pastor. Uh... Uh, I'm a, I'm an advocate for downtown Warner Robins. I'm a, I'm an advocate for downtown being where downtown's supposed to be. From Commercial Circle to Armed Forces Boulevard, I still call it Front Street. I probably always will. I believe without a shadow of a doubt, that's where downtown Warner Robins is. That's where our, our, uh, uh, Chamber of Commerce is. That's where our City Hall is. That's where our Police Department is. And that's where downtown needs to be for the citizens of, of Warner Robins. Uh, I, I do know that there are, uh, developers that would be willing to come in there and, and to change the way that it looks in the downtown Warner Robins area. Uh, I don't think downtown Warner Robins needs to be out on Highway ninety-six. That's Perry. That's not Warner Robins. Uh, and I feel like that we need to do whatever we can do to number one, clean up the blight in downtown Warner Robins, and also to lead and, and bring in, uh, those businesses, uh, that would like to go and help us to change that. They did it, make it. We can do it here in Warner Robins.
Our next question comes from Lauren Schultz. It goes to Mr. Curtis first.
As a follow-up, what are your views on the Perkins Field development? And does this project support your views for downtown Warner Robins?
Thank you, Ms. Lauren. That's a great question. I support the Perkins Field development. Uh, it's something that's needed. As workforce houses that will bring in, uh, citizens that, that can occupy that area. And once you have a, um, a, a base down there, uh, uh, a base down there, other developers can come in and they can develop, and they have things to, they have, uh, people to sell products to. I know a lot of people were totally against Perkins Field. But it's something that we need. Nothing has happened in that area. We need to see dirt moving. Until we start seeing something happening, it's gonna always be the same. And, you know, you say there's developers that's down there that's willing to come. It's been, what, ten, fifteen years that we've been talking about a downtown Warner Robins? Nobody showed up?
Same question, Mr. Nichols.
Well, I've already spoken out about this already. I spent six minutes standing in front of city council and letting them know that I think it's absolutely absurd that we would bring that development to Perkins Field. Uh, I don't think that you set a, uh, uh, minimum rent, uh, development on Perkins Field on the, on the face of Warner Robins, uh, Watson Boulevard, and, and expect them to come. There's four thousand square feet of retail space that they were gonna put down below. A Dollar General has an average of between seventy-nine hundred and ninety-one hundred square feet in it. We're talking four thousand square feet. How much retail are we really gonna put in four thousand square feet? On top of that, you're talking about minimum income. They need to be, that, that type of development needs to be in an area that you can, that, I'm sorry, I got, that, that you can, that you can, uh, uh, develop, that needs development. Front, I mean Armed Forces Boulevard, Sixth Street, Vicky Lynn Drive.
We'll finish up the question about the Perkins Field project with Ms. Britt.
Um, with the Perkins Field project, um, I don't necessarily back it. Um, but not for the same reasons as these gentlemen here. Um, to me, it's a safety concern. If you have children living in that apartment complex, it's right off of Watson Boulevard. Where are these children gonna play? And I have vocalized this concern, um, with people in council. Um, and the answers I got didn't satisfy me. Um, also, the rent amount that they're gonna charge these people are the same prices that you can find a three-bedroom home for in this area. Um, so to say that it's going to be beneficial, not necessarily. Because you can go find a home with a yard in the same neighborhood for the same prices as these apartments. So to me, it's not beneficial for the city at all. It's not beneficial for downtown.
Our next question comes from Shane Gottwals. It goes to Mr. Nichols first.
Based on what you perceive about the current state of affairs with city government, do you believe a forensic audit should be performed, and why or why not?
Uh, I believe that every entity of the city of government of Warner Robins, uh, needs to have an audit. I know that we do audits every year, but that's a superficial audit. Um, we need some, somebody to come in. We need to get them to overlook every avenue of spending from mayor all the way down to the, the end, the, you know, the, the lowest rung of the, of the total poll that's got a card, that's got money to be spent. How it was spent, where it was spent, who gave the approval. We need to make sure that it was spent the way that it was supposed to be spent. There are many questions. I don't have the answers. Um, but if I was to become a city councilman and you were to vote me in, I would ask for this ci- this, uh, forensic audit, uh, to be done.
Ms. Britt, your turn to answer the question about the forensic audit, please.
Um, I hundred percent believe we need a forensic audit. Not only for where our money's being spent, but also from how many vehicles we have all the way down to is our toilet paper supply or one? Um, we need to get our priorities in order where we're putting our money. Um, in a household, you do the same thing. Make sure your bills are paid first, and then maybe you can go out to dinner or to a movie. We need to do the same thing with our budget in city. Make sure the things that we need done gets done, like having enough police officers and having enough code enforcement officers. And then maybe we can build an extra park or add on to another park. Uh, but we need to get our priorities straight, and yes, we do need a forensic audit.
We'll finish up the forensic audit question with Mr. Curtis, please.
Thank you, sir. So, I have no problem with a forensic audit. When I first came on council, I, I, I recall a couple of council members asking for a forensic audit. They said that we needed to do a forensic audit. Why hasn't a forensic audit been done? A lot of times things just get pushed to the wayside. Why? But I am one hundred percent in agreement with us having a forensic audit. Also, just not a forensic audit, one thing we need to look at is our accountants. We're not, we cannot continue using the same accountants year after year after year. We need to change our accountants up. You know, a lot of times the accountants, they get comfortable with the numbers. So, so let's not just think about forensic audit, which is something that most definitely needs to be done, but we need to look at our accounting system.
Next question comes from Steve Minor. It'll go to Ms. Britt first, please.
Robins Air Force Base has a three-point-two-billion-dollar impact on our local economy. Community factors like education, crime, image, infrastructure, business, and community leadership can play a critical role in future mission growth or loss. Ms. Britt, how would the impact your actions have on the base be considered in your decision-making?
Well, we definitely need to make sure that we have things in place that attract people or attract the base to stay. Um, whether that be industries, and you brought up schools, we need to make sure that we have the best schools in the state. That way people are fine with bringing their children here. Um, so far, in my opinion, we do have the best schools in the state. Um, but we also need to make sure we have a good relationship with the people on base, whether it's having weekly meetings, um, bringing more facilities here to build airplane parts, um, or mechanical businesses. Um, so we definitely need to make sure we keep a good relationship with the base, because if it did shut down, we would be a ghost town.
Mr. Curtis, your turn, please.
And before you answer, there's just a little different flair to that, I'm sorry. Councilmen Curtis, are our local elected leaders engaged with and supporting the base at a level they should be? So that's a separation question between yourself and, um, Ms. Britt and Mr. Nichols.
Okay, thank you. So, um, yes, we are. Yes, we are. So the, the mayor is, is our guy. He's the CEO of the city. So he, he communicates with, uh, officials on base very well. And through that, he brings back the information to us. And with that information, you know, that's, that's what we make our decision on, based off the information that he's brought back to us. So to answer your question, most definitely, we are engaged with, uh, officials, base officials.
Mr. Nichols?
So Robins Air Force Base is our, uh, stronghold. It's, it's what we have lived on. It's what we've leaned into. It's what we've grown by for many, many years. Robins Air Force Base, uh, could be used in a lot of different ways. One of those was, uh, using the runway. Um, that wasn't done for many reasons. Uh, but, but not only keeping Robins here and keeping more missions coming, uh, to Robins, uh, I think that we need to strongly consider, uh, bringing in larger companies, larger industries that could be, uh, used for the runway, a UPS or a FedEx or somebody like that could, could use that end runway and, and, uh, and, and keep both of them happy, keep both, all of them happy. Um, do I, do we communicate? Absolutely. The chamber is involved in a great way in helping the city, uh, with the, with the base. Uh, the mayor is, is definitely, uh, discussing things with the, with the base constantly, and we are asking, uh, those leaders at the base how we can help them on a daily basis.
Pastor Vining with our next question. It goes to Mr. Curtis first.
As we see more and more of our community being developed, we see our agricultural economy going down. We also have seen through the decades the diminishing of the type of factories that used to make apparel and things like that in this area. What do you think is the best way to increase revenue to the city?
Through our sewer. That's again, our enterprise fund. We have something called an enterprise fund. So we can grow, we can grow our sewer. Um, one of the problems right now that we have with our sewer is that, uh, we have, uh, extended a lot of sewer out to the county, but we're not actually collecting the payments. So we need to figure out how we're gonna collect those payments. And, um, yeah, we'll most definitely grow the revenue for the city. And also, we just need to bring in more businesses. That's why we have a redevelopment authority. Uh, again, Pure Flavor was like one of the greatest things that happened. I mean, it, it, it just, it, it opened our eyes of what was to come. So I totally support, uh, redevelopment authorities. Uh, they're doing a good job. And, um, hopefully they're gonna continue to bring industries and, uh, businesses to Warner Robins that for, it will increase our revenues.
Revenue question from Mr. Nichols now, please.
Same question. Um, I believe without a shadow of a doubt that we need to work very diligently to bring, uh, more, more businesses, more industry. Uh, and, and you say, well, where we gonna put them? Well, we've now got four-hundred-and-thirty-five acres we can put them on. Uh, we've, we've got other land, um, that, that we can put them on in, in other industrial areas. Um, with my time, uh, spent in, in past, uh, as past, uh, council member, I, I learned that unfortunately, housing is not what pays the bills. It, it is the businesses that pays the bills. They are the ones that bring large numbers of tax digest to the cities. So we need to work as hard as we can to bring businesses, to bring those businesses that are gonna bring more workers, that are gonna bring more housing, and we're gonna bring more businesses. So we really need to work hard to make sure that that is happening, um, here in Warner Robins.
We'll finish up that question with Ms. Britt, please.
Um, I definitely think we need to bring in more businesses. Um, I had a meeting with someone that's a part of the JDA. Um, and certain things that development authorities can do that necessarily city council members cannot is give incentives and tax credits to these businesses to come and build here in Warner Robins. Um, so I believe we definitely need to work hand-in-hand with them to get in contact with these businesses, broker deals with these businesses. Um, and it's gonna be a two-way street. It's gotta be beneficial for them, and it also has to be beneficial for us. Um, so we definitely need to make sure we keep an eye on the contracts that we were making with these businesses and making sure that it's also beneficial for Warner Robins as well.
Shane Gottwals with the next question, and we'll start with Mr. Nichols for the answer to this one, please.
Do you think that our current council members project a positive image that benefits our reputation in the eyes of Robins Air Force Base leadership?
I believe that there are some that do. Um, I think that there are some that don't. Um, I've watched it over the last year, year and a half while I've been at city council meetings. And unfortunately, we have, uh, some that display disrespect, not only for others, but also for those, um, employees that we have working for us. And I believe without a shadow of a doubt that we are the ones that are supposed to help the, uh, the governments of our, uh, uh, city not to belittle, uh, those employees that work for us. Uh, we should encourage. I, I, one thing I've learned is you criticize in private and you encourage in public.
Ms. Britt, you'll get to answer that question next, please.
Um, I don't think they do. If you do a quick Google search of Warner Robins, and you go to YouTube and you type in Warner Robins City Council, the first three videos that pop up do not point the very, um, nice light on Warner Robins. Um, so I think if we do have a YouTube channel or if we do Facebook Live stream these videos, it'll keep them in, in account to not act out or lash out on each other, because the people can see that. Not just the twenty or fifty people in the room, but everybody in Warner Robins. Um, so I, I was told by someone, not a part of our city council, but, um, Centerville City Council, that the reason they don't do a Facebook Live is because people just want to see everybody argue. Um, I took offense to that, because if you don't want people to see you argue, then don't argue. Um, so I think as a city council member, we are the face for Warner Robins, and we do need to hold ourselves accountable. Business is business, personal is personal. Maybe you don't bring personal when it comes into business.
Alright, next question comes from Lauren Schultz. It goes to, pardon me, we're gonna wrap up this one. Forgive me, Mr. Curtis. You will get to wrap up this question.
That's the same question, uh, I feel about council. I'm gonna just be honest with you. C- council is great. Council is great. I mean, everybody in council cares about the helping of the city of Warner Robins. I know we've been painted in a, in a bad image, but that's not true. I mean, we, we get along well, uh, since I've been on council. Several council members have said this. It's probably like one of the best councils that we ever had, because we work together, we communicate with each other. We don't talk on an everyday basis, but we talk often, each and every one of us. So this idea that, you know, we're just this bad, terrible group of people, I totally agree with it. I sit there, I see what's going on. I see how deals get worked. I, I see how deeds get accomplished. You know, you have a few that, few people that's not on council, that's always on the outside looking in, that, I mean, they're, all they do is criticize. That's, that's what they wanna do. They just wanna criticize. They wanna find any little bad thing that they can and just try to grow it. Um, like I said, I mean, it's just fact. It's just a fact of life. People, they just, they, they just hang on to the bad stuff. They don't see the good stuff, you know? So council is great.
I'm sorry, I totally disagree with this too. Apologies necessary. We'll now go to Ms. Schultz for the next question. It goes to Ms. Britt.
Are there changes you would recommend or support to the scope and authority of the various Warner Robins development agencies?
Um, for me, talking to a couple of the other development authorities, um, I've been told that they don't communicate very well. So communication is key, especially when you're dealing with money and you're dealing with, um, bringing industries in. Um, so even though I'm not a part of any authority or committee, um, even as a council member, I would like to make sure that they stay in contact with each other, that they know what's going on, um, with each development authority. Also, we need to make sure that the buildings that these development authorities own are up to code. Um, and they're making sure that they have businesses in them. Um, a authority that just owns an empty building is a waste of money. So we need to make sure that their buildings are up to code and that they're putting businesses in those buildings as well.
Mr. Curtis, your turn to respond.
Development authority, again, I support the development authority one hundred percent. They are doing a great job. Other cities are coming and talking with the director, trying to figure out, how do we do that? How do we get those things accomplished? I mean, even with the Perkins Field is, uh, you know, we talked about, uh, workforce housing. Uh, a couple of counties, they said, well, you can go rent a house in, uh, another neighborhood, same price. You know how much a house gets grass cut these days?
Three bucks.
Yeah, so the thing about it is, our development authorities doing well. They're bringing industry. They're, they're, they're getting people here where they're in recognized in a positive way outside, um, middle Georgia area. I mean, they're doing good. I support them one hundred percent. And I, I know they will continue to get the job done as long as people stop throwing shots at them and criticize them.
Finish up this question with Mr. Nichols, please.
Well, in all honesty, I don't have a say at this point, because I don't know what the development authorities are doing. I don't know how they're working. Um, I hearsay. And, and so for me to sit here and say how I would change it or like- And so for me to sit here and say how I would change it or are they up to par, are they working together? I just know one thing. On one particular board, there are three people that are supposed to sit on that board. And that is the chairman of the county commission, the mayor of Warner Robins, and April Bragg for the Chamber of Commerce. Neither one of those three sit on that board. So that's the only thing that I can speak of and that is the fact that the people that are supposed to sit on that board are not there. So other than that, you know, I would have to really look at it once I get in and see how things need to, you know, need to be done, if they need to be changed. That's the only thing that I can speak of at this point.
Our final question for our post six candidates before closing statements will come from Shane Gottwals. It goes to Mr. Curtis first please.
The subject was touched on earlier, but please provide your reasons for or against an independent review of our city's charter.
There's nothing wrong with going back and checking behind yourself. So we can, let's review the charter. Let's see, you know, is it working, what changes need to be made? But also, we're in the process of doing it. We're looking at restructuring the entire city right now as far as bringing in city administrator. So at the end of the day, you should always check behind yourself. So there's nothing wrong with going back and looking at the charter. I'm not saying that what's going on right now is bad. It's working. It's been working for a very long time. And Warner Robins has been very successful with the charter that we have. Our city has grown truthfully. It's one of the fastest growing cities in middle Georgia, in the state of Georgia. So, I mean, let's go back, let's take a look at it. I have no problem with looking at the charter.
Mr. Nichols, the charter question to you.
Absolutely. I spoke earlier that, yes, there needs to be a review of the charter. It is not set in stone as to who's in charge. It's not set in stone as to how things are done on a daily basis. So yes, there needs to be a review. We need to make sure that whichever direction we need to go. And let me say this. In order to make changes, you've got to make sure that the platform that you're living by is ready first. So the charter's got to be taken care of first before you can ever change what's going on in the city.
All right, we'll finish the question up with Ms. Britt.
I believe we should take a look at it. I think we should every couple of years. I mean, times change, peoples change, the city changes. So with change, you need to go back and review and make sure everything is in line with what's going on and moving forward. So I don't see why we can't take a look at the charter and make sure it's in line with what the council's doing and what the city needs.
All right, we'll now finish with one minute closing statements. We'll go with Mr. Nichols first, then Ms. Britt and we'll finish up with Mr. Curtis.
Guys, I love the city. I lived forty years inside the city limits of Warner Robins. I spent much time selling the city over the last twenty years to every part of this state. Without a shadow of a doubt, we are a great city. We have great people here. We have great businesses here. We have a lot of things that can get done. Unfortunately, over the last eight to ten years, it's been at a standstill. Again, we've gotten a little bit here. We've got a business there. We've got a lot of houses being built. There's not a lot of houses being built inside the city limits of Warner Robins. They're being built in the county. And I'm proud of that. I'm proud of that. We were, in a meeting that I had many years ago or a few years ago, you know, thirty thousand people were going to come by twenty thirty. I believe without a shadow of a doubt that this is a great place. I love it. And I'm going to do whatever I can to make sure that it continues to be the city of Warner Robins that we would love for it to be.
One minute closing statement. Ms. Britt?
Warner Robins is a great city. We do have pickups. We do have crime. But in all, it's a great place to raise children. It's a great place to live. We definitely do need to bring more businesses in. Small businesses run in my family. My mom's side has a small business. My dad's side has a small business that I help run. So small businesses are the building block of Warner Robins in my opinion. But we definitely need to focus and crack down on crime. People committing these crimes are not afraid anymore. They will literally stand on the street and commit a crime right in front of your face. They're not afraid. Because they know we don't have enough police officers or it takes thirty minutes for them to get there. So they have time to get away. I live in a neighborhood where I face this issue on a daily basis. So I definitely think we have a great city. We do need more police officers so we can make it even greater. Thank you.
We'll finish up our closing statements. Mr. Curtis please.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Warner Robins, this is my city. I was actually born at Houston Medical Center. So I've been here for all forty-three years of my life. I say, this is my home. At the end of the day, I am here for the citizens of Warner Robins. I am here, I'm the one to get your concerns heard. I want to make sure that we're doing what we need to satisfy our citizens. Blight, at the end of, blight is, like I say, is a cancer that is consuming us. We have to deal with that. If we want to continue to grow our city, we've got to deal with the issues that we have going on right now, which is blight. Blight produces crime every day, all day. So once we address the blight issues and go ahead and give the tools and resources to our code enforcement, we're just going to continue to grow. And again, rooftops doesn't grow. The city revenue comes in from businesses. So we've got to bring those businesses back to Warner Robins.
Miranda Britt, Larry Curtis, John Nichols. Thanks very much for being here. We know people appreciate the fact you have pride in the north side and the south side of town. Again, dates to remember folks. October seventh, last day to register to vote. That's coming up quickly. October fifteenth, the early voting begins. Then November fifth, the general election when the council seats will get filled. This time we're getting ready to welcome our candidates for post two, the at-large seat. Got a moment to settle in here. We're now welcome to center stage our candidates for post two. This is the at-large seat which encompasses the entire city of Warner Robins. We have three candidates for the spot currently held by Carolyn Robbins. She is not seeking reelection, so we will have a new person in the post two seat. Our candidates are Stephen Boyer, Charlie Bibb, and Eric Langston. We appreciate you all for being here. We'll begin our questioning. Pastor Viney, you have the first question. It'll go to Mr. Boyer.
We appreciate you guys' willingness to serve. What do you think is the greatest challenge our community faces and what is your plan to address it?
Candidate, you have two minutes to answer this question.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so we've heard a lot of answers today and so hopefully we've asked them the same questions and hopefully we can give you a little bit different answers and keep you awake a little longer. But for me, similar to what Miranda said, you know, she said she had a couple of things that came to mind and of course, the government transparency, communication out to the people so we are aware of the plans before it's too late to make changes to the plans. And so those were a couple of issues. And then today, I was at Arby's having lunch and I spoke with Renata. And I said, you know, I'm doing this forum later today and I asked her just to get her opinion. She lives on the north side of town, Soul Circle area. And I used to live there as well. And she said, come in, right off the bat. So we had a good conversation. And, you know, I can think, the government needs to fix this. The government needs to fix that. And sure, we can look at government and we can see that there are things that may need to be fixed. But what we really need to focus on is the day-to-day life, the the way that people live their days. I mean, they go out there and they see drug deals being done. They just feel insecure. They feel really insecure. And so what we need to do is we need to focus not just on increasing police officers, that the chief says we need to do that, because that definitely needs to be respected. But that's just a Band-Aid. We need to look at the underlying causes. What's causing people to do crimes? Police completely a great measure, obviously, but something's causing that. And so I look for a day, maybe one day Warner Robins doesn't need police officers. It'd be nice to have zero crime. So let's look into things that we can find the source of it, minimize that. And maybe one day we'll be talking about, hey, we need less police officers instead of that.
All right, Mr. Bibb, two minutes on this question please.
Thank you very much. Thanks for everybody showing up. Those are on the internet live. That too, Bibb, want to say thank you to the Chamber and to the Board. Thank you guys so much for coming and Frank for hosting this. I quit smoking in nineteen ninety-seven and I've heard a lot of smoke tonight. I just want to be honest with you. You can say a lot of stuff and sit up here and the thing that needs to change with our city is trust and transparency, number one. I could be a politician and sit up here and tell you fire, police, and tell you all those things that every candidate's going to talk about. Balancing the budget, moving this money. But I'm going to tell you, from what I've heard from our community, is the fact that the way that our council is operating, it is an embarrassment. Not only embarrassment, it kind of angers me a little bit, but a good anger that I didn't just sit down, but I wanted to do something about what's going on. The smoke is the fact. We know there's a group of people that are just flat running the city and they're making all the decisions their way and the way they want to. And they're not hearing the voice of the people of Warner Robins. And you, we the people of Warner Robins ought to have a big say about what goes on in this city. They're not listening to what you're saying. They're not listening to your concerns. They're doing what they want to do. And I'm telling you, our government needs to change. I don't know about you, but I didn't hire a mayor to wave hands and just shake hands with people. I hired a mayor to be an executive of the city. I pulled up the budget report and I looked at all the people that are in this city and the way it is structured and the way it ought to be structured. And we ought to go back to that structure. I didn't hire a mayor to wave hands. The council ought to be helping the mayor move this city into the direction it needs to be.
Mr. Langston will finish up the question of the challenge the community faces.
First, I want to say, Charlie, thank you for wearing good cologne because I'm pretty close to you. Um, okay. Good afternoon, everyone. What I want to say about our biggest challenge moving forward and it's no secret, this was a very challenging question, but I firmly believe that it's growth. Growth is a good thing, but we are going to be facing several challenges moving forward due to growth. Whether we like it or not, Warner Robins is soon to be the center, the universe of middle Georgia. We're a corporation. We're no longer a small city. So we've got to start instead of growing out, growing up a little bit. But think about it. What do you do every day when you wake up? Most of us take a shower, brush our teeth, maybe drink some coffee. You can't do that without saving water. Our sewage, our water, the infrastructure underground is seventy-five years old. It's going to take an investment of fifteen million just to get a good start on repairing sewer and water. Twenty million to add to the wastewater treatment facility. If we grow, I think probably, let's see, it's a I think it holds twelve million gallons of water. We're at eight point one. So once we get to ten point five, we're going to have to start investing in a new wastewater treatment center. This is twenty million dollars on top of fifteen million dollars of infrastructure that already needs to be improved. I think that's our biggest challenge moving forward and we should have a good growth plan moving forward. Thank you.
All right, Shane Gottwals, we'll have our next question. From here on out, candidates, one minute for response. And this question will go to Mr. Bibb first.
This question is uniquely important since all of you would be new to the council. But what is it about each of you that makes you uniquely qualified to be a city councilman?
My greatest quality is I love people. I love people from all walks of life. I don't judge people. I don't determine where they come from, what finances they have, what they don't have. But I love people and that is the greatest quality that I have. And the reason why that makes the greatest quality is because I would listen to each and every one of you and your concerns. They won't be pushed to the wayside. And that love that I have comes from the Lord. I didn't know that love until he found me one day. And he found me in a wilderness and God changed my life. And I absolutely fell in love with people. And I am here for the city, for you that are sitting out there to be a voice for you on this council.
Mr. Langston answered the question please. About qualifications for council.
Thank you, Frank. For those who don't know, I was born here. I was born at the Houston Medical Center in February twenty-fourth, nineteen eighty-three. I was raised here on the baseball fields of Warner Robins. I know the hearts of the people. I know the lay of the land. I know the challenges that we face due to growth. You know, growing up playing baseball, I learned really quickly that bases win ballgames. And the most important, let's see, for a team to win, they have to communicate fastest, the quickest. And that team who communicates the fastest and the quickest wins. Communication, I learned, the most important skill in local government is communication through baseball. Two, serving six honorable years in the Air Force taught me several core values. Integrity first, service for self, and excellence in all we do. And those are my watchwords on a daily basis as I've given back to this community over twenty years. I'm a product of Houston County's amazing school system. After high school, I went on to Mercer University to get a bachelor's degree in political science. Then I went on to obtain a master's degree in public administration from Georgia College. This journey through education taught me a much deeper understanding of government. It taught me the strengths, the weaknesses, the constraints, the opportunities. Furthermore, this deeper understanding of government taught me professionalism, critical thinking, and judgment. Thank you.
We'll finish up this question with Mr. Boyer please.
Thank you. What makes me unique? First of all, I want to address the fact that someone said earlier, we have over seventy-five thousand people in the city. There's three people up here. Okay, that alone is unique. Okay? We should have more people getting involved in the government. So that alone makes us three unique, period. As far as up here, this right here is a continuation of a life of service. I have a military background. I was in the Navy out of high school. I served six years in the Air Force Reserves. And in civilian life, I'm also a servant. I am a math tutor Monday through Thursday for adult learners. I basically have shaped my life in a way consistent with my values. I can maximize time with my kids. I've built a business consistent with promoting financial responsibility using the power of community and freed up enough time to be able to serve in this way.
Next question from Lauren Schultz. It'll go to Mr. Langston first please.
How will you improve communication between the council and residents?
That's a really good question too. First and foremost, we need more transparency and so y'all, no doubt about that. I think we should Facebook livestream city council meetings. This would improve communication. Furthermore, once I decided to run for council, I knew that I was just one vote. And it takes a team to get the job done. For council to be successful, to move the city forward, it requires an entire body. That's all I have for communication.
All right, Mr. Boyer, you will now answer the question please.
Thank you. There is no reason why every city councilman, mayor, cannot have their own blog. We need to know what they're thinking. We need to know what's coming down the pipe. And, you know, people can come to meetings, sure, but people are busy. People want to, we need to meet people where they are. And right now, that's on their phones and on their computer screens. And we can say, well, if they cared enough, then they would come to a meeting. And there's some validity to that. But bottom line is, as much as you say, come to a meeting, people are busy. People have lives to live. So we need to meet them where they are. Set up a city blog. Have city council members and the mayor have a means to communicate out weekly. Every other week, at least, give people a heads up to what they're thinking, why they're thinking it. And what we'll do is typically when there's no communication, people like to paint a negative picture and think the worst. I think we need to get away from that and communicating out will definitely help.
All right, we'll finish up the question with Mr. Bibb. One minute for your answer please.
Communication is a key. Everybody knows that. Communication runs everything in our life. Communication is a key. Everybody knows that. Communication runs everything in our lives. To our marriages, to our families, to our children, to our kids. And we, we, we could do a, a lot better job in communication, not just having town, town halls to get elected, but continue to have town halls afterwards to allow the people to come voice, to allow the people to show up to ask important questions to their councilmen. Um, we can also, um, have, uh, uh, forums just like this and, and continue forums just like this. Uh, this is a great way to communicate and get people out so we can shake hands and listen to the community. And, and not just have these during election time and not just show up for, um, the time that we're trying to get into an office, but to continue the communication with the, with, with the community.
Next question will come from Steve Minor. It goes to Mr. Boyer first, please.
The Warner Robbins Police Department employs some of the finest officers in the nation. But recruitment and retention has become increasingly difficult as it has in many other locations in the United States. What role do you believe the councilman plays in being a force enabler in this instance?
It's a good question. All right, so the city councilman has a responsibility, obviously, to do what he can do to make its community safer. If the police chief, uh, says he needs things to make his community safer, then we do what we can to provide that. Um, if he says we need to provide better benefits packages, better pay, uh, then we need to find a way to do that. But again, like I said earlier in my, my opening statement, I, I would like to acknowledge the, the police department, absolutely. Like you say, they are a great group of people in, in the public service. But that's a part of the bigger picture. And so I don't want to focus completely on the police officers being the, the only solution to the problems that we have. I want it as part of a more comprehensive, more comprehensive approach.
Mr. Bibb, your turn, please.
Thank you to our first responders and our policemen here at Warner Robbins. You are some of the greatest and thank you very much. Um, we need to continue to find, um, ways within our budget to continue to fund the police department. There's no doubt about that. As we grow, we need to stay ahead of the curve, not behind the curve. And so when we catch the police department up, which to my understanding, uh, through, uh, the leading of the mayor, that we're, are well on our way, um, to have the police that we need to have. But we need to continue in that growth, uh, to find ways inside of the city to continue to budget ahead and continue to allow them to, uh, have a great benefits package, uh, with what they have now to, to plan ahead to increase them so that we can attract great police officers to our community.
We'll finish up the police question with Mr. Langston.
Bottom line is, you know, our police officers, our first responders are our first line of defense. You know, when we call, they answer, saving our lives, our properties, deterring potential threats, dangers. Do the best they can with the resources they have to keep us safe. The police department is struggling. They're undermanned. We have a constrained budget. But I have a, a comprehensive plan to address that without raising taxes. And I'll start with what we call, well, what would be called some sort of new, uh, fee attached to citations. So if one receives a citation, it goes strictly into a public safety fund. That would be a good start. Secondly, I would give, city council recently had a pay raise. I would give all of that pay raise money back to the city. I don't need the money. I'm not here for the money. I'm for the people. So I'd give that money back to the people, back to unfunded and underfunded programs which support public safety.
Next question will come from Lauren Schultz. And we'll start with Mr. Bibb.
I often hear people say that there's nothing to do in Warner Robbins, and I was one of those as a teenager. We all know that, uh, that's not completely true, but many communities around us have year-round activities organized by their city governments, bringing families in the community together. How will you help Warner Robbins foster more family-friendly community engagement?
That's a great question. And we all know that we need more activities in Warner Robbins. Um, I love what Perry does with the, with the food trucks, uh, throughout their city. It is absolutely awesome if any of you guys have attended that. Um, but we have to have a place to put that. Um, tonight I heard a lot of talk about, uh, we're going to do this, or we're working on this, and we're working on that. You can say that year after year after year, but we need to do those things to attract, uh, an area to people where people can come and enjoy our city, where people want to come and enjoy our city. Um, so that is a great concern. And we don't need to talk about that stuff anymore. We need to act on that. And there are things in place that we can do at this present time where other things are actually being pushed ahead of, of this particular, um, question that, that needs to be done. Um, and we need to, we need to reexamine everything that we're doing right now so that we can focus on an area like this.
All right, Mr. Langston.
That's a good question. And how do we foster more family-type events is, well, for starters, we have a farmer's market. Every Thursday, this allows folks from all across the community to come together, congregate. It's a great asset to this community. We do need to improve our ways of attracting or creating more events that are family-friendly. Uh, for example, if we can just find out and establish where we want our vibrant, a vibrant city center to be, we can pull in folks from all over the city to cooperate together, to work together, to, to, to live together, to, to breathe together, to worship together. So going forward, the city council is going to require a master plan, a comprehensive plan to see if we can identify a good place in town where we can build a new vibrant city center to get people to come to.
And we'll finish up the question with Mr. Boyer, please.
They have some good answers and that's, that's great. You know, you asked a question, I immediately wrote food trucks, you know, the Perry, uh, Perry event that they have. That's wonderful. Uh, been down there. A lot of people walk in the streets. It's just a really good vibe. I don't see why we can't have something like that. Uh, the parking lot in front of the Houston Health Pavilion, I think it'd be a great location for that. As far as other family, uh, fun places to, to go. Uh, so we had, we had, uh, Johnny G's on, on Russell. That's closed down and nothing really has been replaced that. Uh, now people have to go a little bit further down to Rigby's. So I say, we, we were talking to all the panelists earlier, or, yeah, candidates earlier, we're talking about growth and industry. And, uh, that's, that's great. We also do need to try to attract some businesses, uh, who will cater to, um, family fun entertainment.
All right, next question comes from Shane Gottwals. It'll go to Mr. Langston first.
Furthest question before this evening, which is an important one, but please provide your reasons for or against an independent review of our city charter.
I've been steadfast on my view on a, uh, you said the, the city charter? Oh, okay. Well, look, the city charger, the charter is sort of archaic and outdated. I mean, it's a charter that governed the city, you know, some seventy-five years ago and moving forward. So I, I certainly think we need to take another peek at the charter, reevaluate what we want to see moving forward in the local government and move from there.
All right, city charter question goes to Mr. Boyer next, please.
I agree with everyone else. I mean, there's no reason, if people, if people see a reason to change it, there's no reason for us not to review it. Um, it's not going to be made, the decision to change a charter is not going to be made by one person. Um, so if a committee or a number of people review it, decide the changes need to be made, then whatever those changes are, I'm sure will be the best for the city. So I don't see a reason to, to draw a line and say the charter does not need to be reviewed ever. Um, so, yeah, we're doing it.
Next charter question with Mr. Bibb.
The charter needs to be changed back. Bottom line, uh, our city needs to go back to the way it was. Um, I've always learned in leadership that if you have one more, uh, uh, two heads become a freak. And you add five or six or seven, then it becomes a freak show. And, uh, if you have, um, seven bosses that you have to answer to and any one of them can walk in an office and go past a department head and sit there and meet with a bunch of supervisors and figure out what's going on, and there not be some type of structure and process to that, that is not, that is not good. We need to go back with allowing our mayor to be the executive. We need to legislate and appropriate. That is what the council's job is to do, is to work hand in hand. And I want to, I want to be honest with you guys. When I put servant and unity in mind, unity needs to come back to our city. Unity doesn't mean that we're all going to agree on anything or everything, but unity does mean that we need to work together to get these problems solved. And right now, we need to get back to the charter that used to be.
All right, Pastor Vining, next question. We'll start with Mr. Boyer, please.
We've asked a number of questions about the structure of government of the city of Warner Robbins. And I want to go back to another question that I asked because this is a city-wide position here. We promote this city as an international city. The challenge is, is that there's not a lot of diversity up and down the line in our city government. One of the candidates earlier said that I went to the city hall, I see a lot of different people, but that doesn't mean that they're in decision-making capacity. And if we want to attract the best and the brightest to this city, what are we going to do to address the diversity issue?
Okay. Um, I get your question. So you said attract the best and the brightest and then diversity. So there's, that can be two separate issues. Okay. Um, the default should be build with the most qualified? Absolutely. All things being equal, a diverse, uh, workforce, a diverse, leadership in the city government and department heads that reflect a cross-section of the population of, of, of Warner Robbins is absolutely preferred. So I support that. Um.
Mr. Boyer? Mr. Bibb, sorry. Can you just say, Mr. Bibb, your turn.
We need to be more diversified. We're the international city of Warner Robbins. And we have some great people here. We got some great, great people that are coming to this city. And we do need to address the, the diversity. But at the same time, when, when you have a position open, everybody that is qualified to, uh, apply for that position, there needs to be a, a board that, that reviews that and interviews those people. And, and the board needs to be diversified itself. And they need to pick the right candidate for the job. Um, when we start picking and choosing first, uh, based on race, then we can get into a whole nother, uh, ball of wax when you come to that. But if you will have a process in place, a process across the board, citywide, that follows the same structure, you will not run into these problems. And if somebody from another, uh, ethnic background is qualified for that, then, then they should be looked at just like anybody else. Diversity is needed in our city.
And we'll finish up the diversity question with Mr. Langston.
I agree. I agree with Charlie. I mean, we do need to have some sort of panel, uh, diverse panel of folks who are interviewing, you know, potential candidates for jobs that exist in Warner Robbins. Um, secondly, I do believe that we do need to, some more training and education. I think our workforce in the city, some of the best workers in the state of Georgia, uh, may not be educated on diversity. It may still need some more training and education. Um, secondly, I would say that, you know, just looking as the international city, are, do we have any diverse candidates applying for these jobs? That's another thing we need to evaluate. So all in all, yes, we do need to have a, a diverse city hall. There's no doubt about it. And at the end of the day, we need to see, you know, who's the type of quality candidates we have applying for the positions and it just move from there.
All right, Lauren Schultz with the next question. It goes to Mr. Bibb first.
We have withdrawn funds from our savings at an alarming rate. How do we build our rainy day fund back up?
Uh, great question. Heard it all night long. And, uh, I've, you can go back and forth with people that you talk to. Uh, you can ask people, say rooftops build brings commercial, commercial brings rooftops, uh, business brings, uh, rooftops. I want to tell you this, they all work together. And all aspects of our community need to be focused on and, and the growth of our city. I've also heard tonight about the infrastructure that, uh, we currently have. And there's a lot of talk about fixing it. It, it needs to be fixed. I heard somebody say tonight that's been on this council for a long time that says, we're at capacity. Why hasn't that been addressed? Why haven't there been money appropriated to that to start working on those projects to fix those? Because we're not going to grow if we don't have that. We're not going to be able to build those funds up if we don't bring new businesses in, if we don't build homes, if we don't have commercial and rooftops. It's just not going to happen. And so we have to address that.
Right, new question for Mr. Langston.
Yeah, that is a great question. So how do we increase our revenue for the city? Number one, we can sell our sewer. That is, uh, our enterprise fund is millions of dollars, millions of dollars. So growing our sewer, selling our sewer will bring a lot more revenue into the city. Uh, number two is attracting businesses and industry. We're doing that right now. I'm at the four hundred and thirty-five acres that the, uh, Joint Development Authority, the Development Authority of City Warner Robbins purchased. We have industry coming in now that's going to grow the tax base. Thirdly, we need to, to really think hard, long and hard about the forensic audit, to see where this money's going. We have a hundred and seven million dollar budget. That's a lot of money. There's a lot of room to, to trim some fat. So we definitely need to get in there with the scalpel and go to town and dig and see where we can find some extra revenue.
We'll finish up the revenue question with Mr. Boyer.
I'm going to echo what they said. Uh, basically you need to increase the savings, right? So you need some sort of gap between what you spend and what you earn. So we can increase income, we can decrease expenses. So what we need to do is we need to, uh, put our expenses under a microscope, figure out where we can cut, look at the things that we can do to increase the revenue, widen that gap, and, uh, start saving, savings again.
All right, that question, Steve Minor. It goes to Mr. Langston first, please.
If you could change one thing about zoning in Warner Robbins, what would it be?
Thank you, Steve. That's a very challenging question. If I could change anything about zoning in Warner Robbins?
With the exception of removing me from the.
Okay, that's where I was going with that. One thing I would say about zoning in Warner Robbins is I think we need to, to do more planning and less zoning. Uh, the more planning we do, we can prepare for the future of the twenty-first century and, uh, what workload is coming to Robbins Air Force Base. Not only Robbins Air Force Base, to the other diversified industry in the, in the city of Warner Robbins. So zoning is a challenging question. It's a very challenging question. And I would say, secondly, that there is this overlay on Russell Parkway. We've turned commercial industry around because of this overlay. Every, everybody wants something to look similar and you know, looking like one another, but at the end of the day, it's about commercial. It's about the commercial industry. And we need to remove that overlay on Russell Parkway so we can get some jobs in here and focus on rezoning that area as well. Thank you.
So any question to Mr. Boyer next, please.
I'm not going to pretend to be an expert on zoning. So, um, that's it. I don't know. But what I can do is, I'm, I'm open to the discussion. And I'll talk to all the people in decision-making areas. And, uh, if there's a problem, then I'll fix it.
Finish up with Mr. Bibb.
I'm going to agree with Stephen. I'm not an expert on that and don't expect that any of us are, to be honest with you. You guys are faced today with three candidates that have sat with people and met with people and come up with some great answers. Um, again, um, the, the situation that we need to deal with is use our local people when it comes to zoning and planning, such as the Russell Parkway overlay. We don't need to ignore all the people that own that property. I've always, I've always been a person, um, to lead by example. And you put bright people around you and people that have a whole lot more information than you do, and people that know a lot more than you do. And for us to push our business people away and our landowners away and the people that have created and brought business into this and not give them an opportunity or a voice to say what goes on in their zoning, um, that just can't happen.
All right, Shane Gottwals with our next question. It goes to Mr. Boyer first, please.
Warner Robbins retail, including restaurant business, is spread throughout the city without one, uh, primary area to shop. So are you satisfied with retail development or how could you improve the future for our local retailers?
I'm not satisfied with it. Um, if someone wants to go to eat, I live here, the, the hospital, okay? So we don't have a lot of nicer restaurants. We have a lot of local. Um, I would like to see a more developed restaurant row type of place. A, you know, we talked about the downtown, or other people have talked about the downtown. I assume that that is what downtown would include, some, some restaurants. Uh, but no, no, I'm not satisfied with the options because I, it's too easy. Like, I, I feel firmly in that we need to spend our money in Warner Robbins. And so to keep that money circulated through the Warner Robbins economy, if we don't have, uh, the number and the type of restaurants that we want to dine at, then we're going to go spend money in places outside the city. So I think that, uh, one thing that we can do is, if we care about that, start, even though the.
Mr. Bibb with the retail question.
Mr. Gottwals, will you please repeat the question for me?
Yeah, Warner Robbins retail, including restaurant business, is spread throughout the city without one primary area to shop. Are you satisfied with retail development or how could you improve the future for our local retailers?
Are you satisfied with retail development, or how could you improve the future for our local retailers?
Well, I, I, I think that Warner Robins is being slighted. I think the north side of town, again, that we've talked about, in our commercial circle area, and all that area over there is being pushed aside. I, we got a lot of great builders in here, and, and I love every one of y'all, and everybody wants the, you know, the growth is going out to ninety-six, but we can't forget about the city of Warner Robins. We have a great, great meal in Robin's Air Force Base. That is our fuel. I happen to be employed in there, that is my fuel. That's how I pay my bills. And I love supporting the warfighter, but we can't move everything away from Robin's Air Force Base. We have to improve our downtown. We have to improve that area. We need to find and appropriate some money into that area so that we can have a standard across the board of what our city needs to look like and the presentation that it makes to people driving down to that area.
Finish the retail question out with Mr. Langston, please.
Good question, Shane. I think we have every restaurant in the country except for Chili's, I believe. But, yeah, this goes back to the downtown creation. This goes back to a vibrant city center. If we could do better at attracting airmen off the base to, to these restaurants, we need to have more restaurants closer to Robin's Air Force Base. We need to have, again, a vibrant city center, so we can bring those airmen off the base to, to enjoy food that's closer to home for them. Secondly, I mean, we're just an urban sprawl. And what we need, we do need to do is sort of rein back in this growth and bring it back in, and, and see what happens with economic development from there.
We have two more questions from our panelists. Pastor Vining, you'll have the first question, it'll go to Mr. Bibb first.
Gentlemen, you answered the question a little earlier about diversity, and you reduced it down to a racial issue. It is not a race issue, it's an economic issue. It's a gender issue. It is a development issue. And so to that point, are there changes that you would recommend or support to the scope and authority of the various Warner Robins development agencies?
Again, I'm gonna, I'm not a politician, and I'm not gonna answer a question or, I don't wanna blow smoke. I wanna be truthful and transparent to my city. And I'm not gonna sit here and answer a question that I'm not an expert on. But here's what I am gonna tell you, is that if you'll vote for me and put me in this position, I am gonna look, I am gonna prod, I am gonna be new to this position, and I am gonna look at everything. I am gonna review everything. And I'm gonna be about what's best for Warner Robins, and what's best for the international city of Warner Robins for all people.
Mr. Langston?
Hey, did you repeat the question?
Again, the core of the question is, would you recommend or support what changes to the various Warner Robins development agencies?
Serving on that board, the Development Authority for the city of Warner Robins, as well as the Joint Development Authority with each county of Warner Robins, I can tell you from numerous people that we have a communication problem. And there are open records requests left and right, and it's taking too, too long, too far, I mean, far too long for these folks in the city that wanna know what's going on in the Development Authorities to get this information. I can testify to that firsthand as the custodian of records, not getting the records out on time because of just too much bureaucracy and red tape. So communication for sure.
Mr. Boyer?
My second answer. Like I said earlier, if we're not communicating out, then people are gonna make their own narrative. So we need to communicate out, paint the picture of the vision that we're having, that, that these boards have. And Mr. Curtis said earlier, you know, he's one hundred percent in support of the Development Authority, and he knows that they're doing a good job. But we all don't know exactly what's going on. So we can't really chime in and say, and, with confidence, one way or the other, do we think they're doing a great job? I think there's a perception issue because of the fact that we're not, they're not communicating openly as much as some people would like. And, and I agree with those people. I wanna, I wanna know what they're thinking, what their plans are, where the money's going, why it's going where it's going. And since the vision of the city has, is sort of under their purview, paint us that picture. Let us see how the, the housing developmental work and skill fits into that vision.
All right, final question comes from Lauren Schultz, it'll go to Mr. Langston first.
We've heard a lot of talk today about downtown development or a city center. Where is downtown Warner Robins or the center of the city, and why?
Well, technically, the center of the city is, I believe, is it Russell and Houston Lake? That's the dead center of the city. We're thirty-seven square miles, so it's tough. But I think before we do anything about a downtown or a vibrant city center, first we gotta, we need to define our priorities. And to do that, we need to have a vision, and to do that, we need action. Action requires owning the high ground. Owning the high ground means that we need to be ready for any opportunity that presents itself. So my, my vision is three-tier for this whole downtown effort. One is just curing those things that are, are burning our community, like crime, blights. You know, no vision, no strategic plan, not being sensitive to the needs of everyone. Number two would be enhancing those things that we're good at. I mean, we have a rich history of patriotism, athleticism, academics, and we're starting to see huge improvements with parks and recreation. And lastly, is we gotta start operating out of ambition and not fear. Look, folks, we're not here to prevent a loss. We're here to throw a win, or a win, a check in the win column. And everything we do moving forward must be a team effort, and it must adhere to these, these, this vision just laid out.
City center, got two bells there. Downtown, Mr. Boyer, please.
Let me look at it. I'm just asking, where, where downtown is? It's Commercial Circle.
Mr. Bibb, finish us off, please.
That's a great question, 'cause it's a trick question. And I'm gonna tell you why. 'Cause it depends on how old you are before you answer that question. And that is the truth. That's about being an international city for all people. It's not just designated in one area. Because if you ask our seniors out here, it's Commercial Circle. That's where everything began. You can hear stories that are sitting in this room today about dirt roads being on Houston Mall and beyond. I've heard stories of that, of people in Warner Robins and how long they lived in this community and watched it grow. So it is a trick question. But if you ask anybody, the overall sense is, is Commercial Circle. It is that area. It is the area of where everything began. You don't forget where you come from. And we shouldn't forget where we come from. And we should, as we grow Warner Robins, we should also grow our downtown area.
All right, time for one-minute closing statements. We'll start with Mr. Boyer, go down the line, and finish with Mr. Langston. One minute, please.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, coming out here tonight as we close up. One minute, here we go. So, can anybody just show of hands, what percentage of people elected the people who are in city government right now? Eight, right? Eight percent. A few people know that. That means it's important that people vote. All right? So, here's the thing. I can get up here and say whatever, he can get up here and say whatever, and he can get up here and say whatever. Sounds good, great, that guy sounds good, vote for him. He gets an office. Eight percent of the people is all he needs to, to, to please. That's not a majority, okay? So I want each and every one of you to live here tonight, call five people, let them know there's an election coming up, tell them to participate. If he gets elected, great. If he gets elected, great. If I get elected, awesome.
Mr. Bibb, one minute, please.
Don't start the timing. I'm gonna neglect myself for a minute, okay? Give me a second. I'm asking the city of Warner Robins to do one thing. And that's search your hearts. And the reason why you guys are in here, and the reason why you guys have tuned, tuned in in Facebook Live, I wanna refer to the greatest leader ever, and that's Jesus Christ. And I'm gonna refer to him in this way. He went into Jerusalem, and he seen the money changers sitting at the table. And they were taking of the coffers of people having to go in to offer their sacrifice and taking advantage of people. And Jesus sat down, and the Bible said he made a whip. He didn't just go turn over the tables, he processed everything. He thought about everything. He gave knowledge and wisdom before he turned those tables over. I'm asking the city of Warner Robins to process. I want you to process what you hear, what's going on, and dig and learn. And I want you to go on November the fifth and turn over tables this year.
We'll finish up, one-minute closing statement, Mr. Langston.
First, I wanna say, thank you, Mom and Dad, for everything you've done for me that has allowed me to be here competing for the Snowball Office. Thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, there's not a bad choice up here. I, I respect and admire both of these gentlemen. We all want what's best for Warner Robins. But what I wanna say is this, I believe that my, my education, my leadership, and my experience has suited me well in making sure that the best option is created and selected each time we have a choice to make. And on November fifth, you do have a choice to make. You know, Lincoln once said that the best way to predict your future is to create it. You know, Warner Robins does have a story to write. We have a story to write. And as the next chapter in our city unfolds, it's important to understand how we got here and what that road ahead looks like. I believe our better days are ahead, I really do. And for that, thank you so much for being out here. I ask for your vote, your support, more than anything, your prayers. You can follow us at @EricLangston.com or on Facebook or Instagram. Thank you for coming out.
Stephen Boyer, Charlie Bibb, or Eric Langston. Thanks for being here. Pastor Vining, Shane Gottwals, Lauren Schultz, Steve Minor. Thank you for being here. Thank you to Robin's Regional Chamber. Thank you for Central Georgia Technical College, and thanks to thirteen WMEZ for screening this. October fifteenth, early morning begins, folks. Thank y'all.